Rock and roll.
You get that blinking light or something, right?
Well, welcome all to the August 11th meeting of the Easton Planning and Zoning Board. This is a hybrid meeting, so I will read the procedures for remote participation. Tendons by the Planning Board members will be in person or remote. I think we have everyone here today unless Joanne is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne will not be here.
She will not be here. So what you see is what you get, folks. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you'll need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application, create an account. While conducting hybrid meetings such as this, we'll endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. Number one, while the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio invited to speak by the chair, public participants joining by Zoom will be muted with no video feed. Public lines will also be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. Number two, for general meetings, not hearings, and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. Members of the public viewing the meeting on ECAT may also submit questions in writing via email to dped@easton.ma.us. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting, but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. Number three, all votes will be by roll call. Number four, for public hearings, we do have one tonight, two tonight. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under Participants from Zoom. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Please make sure that all of your points are on topic. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. Off-topic commentary will not be tolerated. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting, signaling the end of the meeting and termination of the ECAT recording. To start tonight's meeting, we will do a roll call. Kidd.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Katam.
Here.
And Weeks.
Here.
And Stetsons here as well. All right, first up, and welcome back, is the continued public hearing for 95 Union Street modification to definitive subdivision and special permit, the state lot Garcon Corp.
Motion to approve continuance for 95 Union Street to August 25.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? Kidd.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Katam.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right. Next up, we have 27 Eastman Street. This is a preliminary concept discussion for a self-storage facility.
So please ask me to raise my hand.
So if we have somebody that's going to be participating via Zoom, please raise your hand and we will promote you.
I did.
I'm working to get the link set up here. Seems to be working. All right. Can you guys see me? Share my screen here?
We can see you just fine. Do you have anyone else joining you tonight?
There's a couple other folks that are here with me, but I don't believe that they'll be speaking.
Okay. If you could just introduce yourself and then the floor is yours.
Yeah. My name is Chris Nodeman. Work with Arco Design Builds or working with Ironwood Development here on this property. And we are interested in building a self-storage, climate-controlled facility along with some mixed-use community studio space, small business storage, et cetera, and wanted to talk through a couple different conceptual site plans.
He should be back.
Sorry, it looked like I got kicked back. Still hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'll try and not do the video. It seemed to be kicking me out.
But I think he just said he's going to try not to do the video.
Can you see the screen that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Of the site plan? All right. So this is our site. We have a three-story, climate-controlled, self-storage facility, roughly a 40,000-square-foot footprint, 121,000 roughly square feet gross over three stories with a, you know, front-facing corner office feature, some exterior access drive-up units, an interior loading area where cars can pull out of the streetway and into the building to actually unload their goods and materials. We have this exterior, single-story, drive-up, exterior access, mixed-use, community studio space, small business storage meant for, you know, recording studios or art galleries or, you know, just somewhere for people to store their larger items, contractor garages, et cetera. On the outside, with a shared parking area along the frontage of the property here. The main two items that we really wanted to talk about and get some feedback on today are in the Furnace Village District's overlay requirements. We have a 150-foot maximum building length requirement for this specific use and site. And we wanted to look at that being something that we would be asking for a waiver on if possible, just being the use of this site and the massing of the building, just more effective use on the property for us to keep all of this square footage in one building. We also talked along the last couple of phone calls we had with Stephanie with some alternative options to potentially break this building up into multiple buildings, which we have some other options that we've sent in as well, maintaining the 150-foot maximum if we needed to go that route. And in order to do that, it sounds like we would have to go through the planned business development as well that has its own restrictions and a couple of things I wanted to talk through that we found in the code associated with that as well. Also kind of shown, and I don't think we've actually sent this to you, something we've worked on over the last week leading into this meeting, is a couple different options of the original plans that we sent where we have the ability to shift the community space exterior drive-up units to the front of the site. We wanted to make that more of a, you know, front-facing feature of the development. We've done that actually with both of the different options to the extent that we can with the topography that we have on site. We have also sent in a conceptual set of elevations and renderings of the, at least the first version, which is the one larger building on the front half of the site. This is a view from the front corner image where you're standing essentially right here at the front of the site on the larger building. You know, the same general look could apply to really any one of these site plans that we ultimately landed on, but took the surrounding area. We've already gotten some feedback that we need to make some adjustments here on the exterior finishes, et cetera, but tried to mimic the surrounding area of a blend of units, materials on the exterior, et cetera. Also took the liberty of going and taking a rendering shot of what the view of this site is down from Eastman Street, just to show the, you know, heavily wooded landscape buffer that exists currently that will continue to exist, as well as the grade change from the road up to the site for what visibility you'd have of the building itself as it stands right now. That is the gist of the information that we have pulled together and talked through today.
So Chris, I didn't do a calculation, but what's the difference in square footage between the single building, larger building option and the smaller building option?
It's all about the same. It's the total gross square footage between the three should be relatively the same. 67, 90, 104.
Versus 121.
121. So a little bit less on the multiple building just because we're eating up more site with paving and driveways for access.
Okay. What does the buffer look like on the side of Robert's Drive?
It's going to be similar from a landscaping perspective, but the elevation is actually higher on Robert's Drive up here in this corner than our site. But the way that we're using the grades, as you'll see in the rendering view, is the site actually increases in elevation along the back. So you'd have a lower building height from the Robert's Drive side of the site compared to the lower end of the site. One of the other things that we talked with before Stephanie, another restriction that is in the Furnace Village District, just on the architectural side of the building, want to talk about those a little bit. Mainly in particular, there is a ground floor minimum height of 14 feet. These storage facilities don't require more than 10'8" from a floor-to-floor perspective. And what we've done here in the elevation rendering that we would like to use to achieve that is more of using the architectural facade and feature on the outside of the building to make it look like the first floor is 14-foot, where realistically the floor line is probably somewhere, you know, on the bottom of this canopy and that architectural feature is actually in the middle of a story. And we're using the exterior facade to give it that look from the outside. Another item on here that we wanted to talk through is just the transparency requirement for the building. One, understanding if this portion of the code is only specific to the street-facing side of the building or if it's for the entire building would be question A. And then question B is just in general on these storage facilities, the inside of the building is all storage units. So everybody, people's stuff essentially is stored, you know, inside, right inside the exterior wall along the entire perimeter of the building because it's circulated with storage units inside the building. So having, you know, glass and transparency on the outside of the building that you can actually see through into the space, you'd just be looking at, you know, people's stuff, which probably wouldn't want that clearly. So, you know, what we can do is have, you know, the glass on the outside of the building. It's really faux glass that, you know, you still have the look of the glazing, but, you know, there's not, you can't actually see through it on the inside of the building. Just a couple of different things we wanted to talk through on the architectural side.
All right, well, let's take the first one first. The minimum height. I guess the first question I have for you, Stephanie, is that something that would require a variance or is that something that could potentially be waived through the special permit process?
I'm sorry, the minimum height?
The three stories.
I believe the purpose of the minimum height is exterior, the way it presents itself to the public, because the idea for this district was that it would become like a walkable, like a tight-mixed-use development, and you would want scale presentation from architecture. So I believe that what they're proposing, and I talked with Mr. Nohmert about this, I believe that they're achieving what the goal of the board is. I don't think it was the number of floors per se or the height of the interior, but more the exterior design in scale.
The exterior scale. Okay.
But what the table actually says, three stories is permitted on this district, yes or no?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, three stories.
Three stories permitted.
Yes.
And the height on the table is what?
It's 37 feet, I want to say, which we are also, we are within that height restriction.
So 37 feet. And I also want to point out, I think I heard Mr. Nohmert say this, that the second building, because it has the two buildings, but it actually has three, would be subject to the planned business development. But the fact that any of the plans have two buildings or more require a special permit for planned business development.
Because it's more than one building.
Because it's more than one building on this site. So in either case, either scenario would require a planned business development, a special permit.
Now, that transparency issue, the second issue that he raised, that's also, I imagine, a similarly aesthetic type.
Correct. Correct. Again, it's supposed to, you know, ideally, but again, I don't see people walking around this at night. You would want artificial lighting to, again, give it, you know, and not a bright light, but to give it that sense that it's actually a protected area. But I don't see people, the location and how they're kind of screening it.
It's closed at night. Will be a gate on the entrance?
Correct.
So it's closed at night, it's late?
Yeah, the night didn't pick up on that.
You can't, it's not 24-hour, you can't go there after hours.
Yeah. Because it will be a teenager's spot.
Right, right, right.
All right, board members, what do we think? Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
I'm just going to, if I could add up another point, because I did pick up on that they were proposing a gate. Of course, now I think about it, makes sense. But if they're proposing a gate, I would think, again, architecturally, you just wouldn't want it to look like one of your standard, you know, right-of-way power-line gates. You want it to have some kind of architectural detail.
Okay.
I have a question. Did you get in touch with the abater there and is that the private residential house on the website?
Are you referencing here?
That's commercial.
This is a commercial business.
They're all commercial.
They're all commercial. Okay.
And then I think there's a bank over here.
Yeah. But in any case, did you contact them? They know about this plan?
No. We, that parcel is part of the overall property purchase that would take place if we were to make this, move forward on this development. So that additional parcel, it's not as part, it's not part of the site plan, would be part of the overall property be purchased as part of this.
Okay. So, but are you saying that that structure remains as just part of some kind of a land deal?
Correct.
Okay.
And one other question that I'll bring up, just as it relates to the planned business development, as you go into providing feedback, I did notice this on the website this morning in digging into the planned business use, and I did notice a 50% what looks like FAR lot coverage requirement for the planned business, whereas the, you know, typical furnished Furnace Village Eastman does not have a maximum lot coverage area by structure. Whereas this 50% requirement, if that was truly on gross building square footage, we would end up with, with any of these site plans, we would be over that threshold, because I think we have roughly 150,000 square feet of site. We'd almost be at a one-to-one if that requirement held true.
I mean, that's a variance, that's probably beyond what we can, I mean, we can, obviously, we can share our impressions of it, but.
And that's generally what the board is being asked.
Yeah.
What, who do you two, kind of reference on that?
Yeah, I just noticed it, so I figured I'd bring it up.
It would require a variance. And then I think we talked about, you know, the lot that's in part of, either three or four buildings.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Are you?
I got you now.
Okay. Are you planning on copying on the parcel of the existing building? You said that existing building is going to remain, correct?
For the time being, as part of this exercise, we are not fully sure, the developer is not fully sure what will be done with that parcel, whether it be sold off as, it's a, you know, another parcel that gets, you know, set up for something else that can benefit the community or the overall site development.
But that.
But open for suggestions on thoughts there.
So again, if it's not part of a separate lot, that means you're, either of these designs, you're going to have three buildings or four buildings, including that building. So that would become part of your planned business development if it's not its own separate lot. If it's its own separate lot, it needs to provide, with the setback requirements.
You got it, came in right there at the end, but I think I understood and understood that if it's separated differently, it'll obviously impact the setbacks and buffers, et cetera, differently. I think right now we're looking at it as if it's its own individual parcel and we're treating our buffers and setbacks associated in that way.
Okay. And so if it's its own parcel, which is fine, it still needs to meet all the setback standards?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, any other thoughts?
I just had a quick question, and this may be not at the right time, but what happened to the parking when you get to the two building or the three building? You go from a fair amount of parking, and I know that these units are drive-up units, but you essentially lose every parking space when you go from a one building to a two building.
Yeah, a combination of a couple of things, just losing available site area with the additional drive access around the site. These facilities typically only have a actual need of three to five parking spaces roughly, maximum, for their use, which, you know, we've gone through countless exercises of, you know, running traffic studies and whatnot to validate the parking need. We can find additional areas for parking if we need to, if we need to meet a separate minimum count and we can't apply for a waiver on the parking. But we just are overparked essentially on the earlier plan because we have room for it. But we certainly don't need the parking specifically out the office. You know, if we wanted to have additional parking off to the sides where we have this community, you know, exterior drive-up unit access, we can. We also have, you know, 30 to 45-foot drive aisles in front of some of these exterior loading areas where we can have more or less hashed loading parking area along the entire frontage of the building to accommodate additional places for people to pull over and park while they're unloading their vehicles into the building.
And then similar question, is there, what about access for emergency vehicles? Like, it looks like on both plans, there's a building that goes all the way back to, I can't tell, is the green area supposed to be developed or is that not going to be developed?
All the green area is just buffers.
Just buffers.
In landscaping, correct. So we would ensure we'd run a, you know, truck turning analysis to make sure that the emergency vehicles can get in and out of the site appropriately.
I just had one more question, and again, you've created a really nice picture of kind of what the site looks like now, but we're in like the fullness of summer in terms of the buffer, and it's hard to tell, but it looks like there's some trees within there that are going to lose all their leaves come fall. So it's going to be a much different look come fall or winter, kind of on the street.
Was there, is that, was there a question for me?
Just more of a comment with that.
I have a question. Is this going on three parcels, 178, 210, and 211?
Correct. Those would be, have to be recombined, replatted as a single parcel or a single plus the smaller building on the front.
And that's why the driveway is going to start down on 178?
That is the intention, just because there's an existing curb cut there, to try and not have to add another curb cut in the road and also be able to have a shared access road that serves the other parcel on the front.
What is the existing business on the 178 parcel?
I do not know offhand. I can look it up real quick.
The property owners?
Yeah, sure. Alan, if you'd like to hear from the property owner, it sounds like he might have more feedback on that.
Oh, sure. Sure. Good evening, Gary Barnikke, 27 Eastman. The existing building is rented out to ECN. It's a company that does a lot of high-end security systems, alarm systems, and so forth. He's occupying the entire building. I've owned it for a long, long time and, you know, my mentor and grandfather is the previous owner and actually built the property. So, yeah, he's fully intending on staying there. Been a long time tenant of mine, takes care of the building. He's a local Easton guy as well.
But this parcel is going to be combined with the other two for this project? How does that?
The whole project presents as all three parcels together. We haven't really discussed the future for that particular smaller piece, but it is part of their plan.
Possibilities.
And if it is, if it is winded up being subdivisible at some point, maybe something that the developer and I speak about.
So who would own the land and the existing building?
The person that's presenting, the party's presenting.
Okay, so you would convey that building and land to?
Right, because the building is on an existing 27 Eastman and then there's 23 and number 19. So those three parcels are being presented to you tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Chris, I did have one other question, actually, that Alan's question reminded me of. With these self-storage type facilities, does the owner typically operate, is it owner-operated or are these leased out to, I guess, third-party vendors typically? How does that, how does that look?
Yes, it's usually leased out to a third-party REIT management group, like an Extra Space, Cube Smart, or a local, you know, mom-and-pop type facility that want to operate the actual building.
Hey, you may not know the answer to the following question, but, you know, how long do they, for some of these larger ones, like extra storage or whatever, how long are these leases typically? Are they just typical 10-year commercial lease or do they go out longer?
I think it just depends on how they all structure the deal, anywhere from, you know, five years to 20 years. Sometimes the REITs will actually buy the facility and take ownership of it after a certain amount of years.
Man, I'm just, I'm curious, because obviously these structures would be difficult to, you know, use for some other.
Reuse.
Yeah, for reuse in some fashion. I mean.
Yeah, you big empty building.
Right.
In case the storage doesn't work.
I mean, it's just a question that, you know, I would probably want to think about and ask more questions during the process.
Sure.
Well, I will ask another question. There was a market analysis or something in order to decide that there will be a storage facility and it will succeed in Easton on that location or is?
Correct.
Okay. I'll address that as well, Gary Barnikke, 27 Eastman. You know, we had the top storage facility analysis done by this individual who's highly respected. These guys know who he is. He checked every aspect of this area, distance from others, the income, the population, the growth, the traffic on the street, and it's really extremely detailed. And it's really extremely detailed and rated this at the top. He said, "This is an amazing location for this type of use," which is why we started looking into it versus some of the other uses that were just not financially feasible to do.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
The other comment I wanted to... You designed this according to what we've seen, with the entrance as far away possible, given your dimensional from the intersection, what I think is okay, still close to the intersection. So this is a busy intersection. Left turn there will be problematic, to say the least. But still, you did the best you could, given the circumstances. I will assume that the traffic in and out of this is not that high, right?
Very, very low, very low traffic count for these facilities. Yeah, they typically have like three to five vehicles visiting these facilities over the course of the day. Very low traffic count.
Makes sense.
So what do we think as a board? Do we have any additional questions? Or do we want to at least give him a thumbs up on the concept? And do we have a preference for one of these designs over another? What do we think?
My opinion is the three buildings. The one that the lower building is facing, the commercial area there, it's probably better looking. But who knows? As you mentioned, on winter time will be different from summertime, and what you are going to see is difficult to sense. But if it is not a huge three-story building, and it's two buildings, 1-2, 1-3, I think it might be more palatable from the point of view of the aesthetics. But without actual detailed design of the site, it's difficult to...
I mean, my thought on it is, with something like this, obviously, they can get more square footage out of the larger building. And it's probably a heck of a lot cheaper to build. You're probably giving them a better chance of success long-term if you go for that. You know, I recognize that there's also a little bit more parking. It doesn't sound like that matters, but I mean, that's another consideration as well. I mean, I'd probably... I mean, look, I tend to agree with almost. I think aesthetically, maybe the three building is probably better. But I think I would probably be in favor of either of them on some level, given everything we've heard here tonight.
I think the three building gives you another point. And we were discussing if this is going to succeed. I think reuse of this site with three buildings like that is more likely to succeed than one big building like that. But it's a preference, but I will accept the one building as well.
Well, I think one thing you can take away from this, Chris, is that we are going to be interested, I guess, on the thoughts of reusing these buildings somewhere down the road. It's just something to think about and something that, if you end up back in front of us, whether it's a recommendation on a variance or a special permit, or a planned business development, these are some of the questions that we'll probably want some more detail on later.
Understood.
Be more energy efficient to have one eliminate two exterior walls. I don't know if you noticed, but there's a huge packaging facility. You can see it in the left-hand side.
You can see it.
So that's also visible, I think, from 106 when you go by there.
You can see it from road drive in winter time, yeah.
Any other comments? All right, Chris, well, I think you've got a largely receptive audience here. Good luck on the planning, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you again.
All right, really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, next up is public hearing. This is the proposed Easton zoning bylaw amendment. This is a citizen petition. And the first section of this is to add Section 235 XX, Special Residential Regulation. Second is new subsection for 23158X for Administration and Enforcement. This has to do with a butter notification and public input for site plan review of exempt uses. This is a public hearing, so I am going to have you read us in.
All right. Town of Easton, notice of public hearing in accordance with provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5. The Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, August 11, 2025, at 6:30 PM via Zoom for the purpose of receiving public comments concerning the following proposed amendments citizen's petition to the Eastern zoning bylaw. Add Section 235-XX to Chapter 235, Article 8, Special Residential Regulations 235-XX, Development Standards for Childcare Centers in Residential Districts. Add new subsection 235-58.X to Chapter 235, Article X, Administration and Enforcement, 235-58.X. A butter notification and public input for site plan review of exempt uses. Copies of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments are available for review at the office of the town clerk and the Planning and Economic Development Office at 136 Elm Street Northeast in Massachusetts during regular business hours. The link to join the remote meeting will be in the agenda posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. This notice is also available at masspublicmatters.org. Sincerely, Robert Stetson, Chair.
Thank you, Mickey. All right, well, welcome to everyone that's here on this, and thank you for your efforts in putting together the materials. I think tonight, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to start and have and ask Stephanie to just sort of orient everyone to what this is. And then, even though I typically would want to have the board provide some comments and feedbacks, I think I'm going to solicit some public comments first so we can kind of understand the reason... Ordinarily, in the last seven years that I've been on this board, these petitions are coming from us internally, so we don't get a lot of citizen petitions. So I kind of want to hear your perspective and your reasoning through this process. So Stephanie, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, so the kind of genesis for these two amendments as a citizen's petition is concerns that were raised by abutters to the childcare facility that was approved during site plan review by the planning board several months ago now at Kennedy Circle. Abutters were concerned about parking and also about noise, children in the play area, and they felt that they should have been notified of the site plan review process. So that is how this came forward. They want to see changes going forward. They understand. And I've confirmed that if this were to go to town meeting and be adopted, it would not change what has happened already in the approval that's already been granted by the board.
So in terms of, just again, a summary of the substance of the proposal, I think maybe... Yeah, if you could just, the two amendments that are being proposed, just a rough, what are they looking for in terms of the dimensional regs? And then in terms of the notification? If you could just give us a summary of that.
So what they want to do is they would like the town to adopt Development Standards for Childcare Centers in Residential Districts specifically. And the proposed amendment would add additional parking restrictions, restrictions on drop-off and pickup areas, a complete enclosure of play area with six-foot-high solid wall, restrictions on dumpster... And I just made a note that dumpsters are already regulated by the Board of Health, and floor area restrictions. On the abutter notification, and again, there's a lot more language here because they're modifying... On the site plan review, they're modifying. And on the Development Standards for Childcare, they're proposing a whole new section to the bylaw. But on the site plan review, what they want to add is a butter notification and public input for site plan review of exempt uses. So basically, what that would require is a notification to abutters when applications for exempt uses are coming before the board under site plan approval.
And just in terms of exempt uses for anyone watching at home, just what are we talking about?
Exempt uses are religious uses. They are certain school facilities and childcare facilities.
So a lot of what we're talking about are Dover amendment kind of...
Correct, that frequently referred to as Dover.
Non-residential uses.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Stephanie. At this point, I would like to open it up to public comment. And so whether, if you're participating through Zoom, you can raise your hand, and if you're here, you can raise your hand, and we'll invite you up and give you an opportunity to speak. Please.
And thank you both, given that you're coming to...
Of course. And just before you...
Grace Chang, 85, Kennedy Circle. I was listening. Yeah, so I've done a lot of research over the past few months when it started, because we, as a neighborhood, didn't know anything was really happening until giant trees were falling down. Well, I mean, they were cutting trees down, right? And then a big parking lot kind of created. And then one of our neighbors looked online, the permits. I didn't even know you could do that, and saw that it was approved already. And we had about seven days before the 20-day decision. It's kind of like set in stone. So it felt unfair as neighbors not even have a say into the safety of our neighborhood. Like, the exit is about 14 feet away from my driveway. They are frequently cutting the corner. My sister already almost had a near miss. Yeah, we have pictures.
Well, if you guys are going to present together, if you could also state your name.
Okay. Hi, my name's Lee Chenlu. I am the owner, the property owner of 85 Kennedy Circle, right next to the daycare, okay? And this is my daughter. And because her English is much better than me, English is my second language, so have her to start over, and then our input will be easier, okay? So for us, in the past, when they had... This is their old driveway.
Like, they would have to just go straight and then turn right? But now that is the...
And now...
Like, there's a...
This is the parking lot.
So they're supposed to exit here. They're supposed to exit here and kind of give us a lot of room, the 30 feet that we should be able to get. But they're frequently cutting through here at a diagonal, so it's a lot closer and a lot faster than it should be in a residential zone or by frankly, any area.
Right next to our driveway. Yeah, in the past, they need to go this way, and then turn right, because there's a tall there. They need to go straight and that. And now the whole parking lot is wide open. They kind of...
Yeah, and like, really...
It's kind of... It's had several chances my daughter would be hit on, hit by the parents. And the other issue is those parents, when they are dropping out of their kids, they are in a rush, okay? They don't even stop. And the parking lot, look around first. They kind of... Like that. It's dangerously. And now, recently, they have six families, okay? They are customers, six families. Three of them do this every day, okay? I can show you the picture. See? This is one. This is two, different car. This is three, okay? Fifty percent of them. Now only six families. And then when they spend to 30 kids, four times more. So do you think we should kind of be threatened every day when we want to go out? And when we try to head in, they will bump us head on, head on? Is that fair? For me, we only concern our safety, okay? And also the seniors. We have several seniors system in our community, okay? They are all in their late 80s. One with dementia, okay? And one had very poorly eyesight, okay? And lots of kids, young kids, walk home, okay? And those parents, they ignore it's in a residential area, okay? There's a... Like that. That's why we are so concerned about all our kids, our residents, okay? And myself, my family four, we facing everything, okay? Before they do any of the change, we are okay. We don't feel any threatened. And now, certainly, every day we go out, I need to be careful. Is that right? I don't think so. I don't hear about the Dover action law, about whatever the exemption is. Dover law, they don't say you can ignore the safety of the residents, the neighborhoods, right? That's all I'm going to say, so...
So kind of our whole goal with this amendment was to add in reasonable accommodations to bring safety and concerns of the neighborhood within those seven Dover amendment, like, I don't know what to call them, like restrictions of setbacks, open space. I have them down here. But essentially, the First Amendment, 235XX, Development Standards for Childcare Centers in Residential Districts, will try to add in additional restrictions on parking, setbacks, open space, and the bulk of the building. And then I think the main one for a lot of the surrounding neighbors is having that abutter notification just to be invited to that site plan review, because quite frankly, I didn't even know these existed. So having just a mail-in notification would have been helpful to at least have our voices heard before it's kind of set in stone and we can't do anything. Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please? You have someone on.
Heather Lewis, 97, Kennedy Circle. I print it out as this is an unfamiliar setting to me. So I'm here to speak in a general sense about the amendments that are proposed. I want to express my support for both of the amendments that are proposed. I feel as though the amendments offer fairness and balance, and they allow for the public to be engaged to at least share their input, knowing what the Dover amendment states. But it will allow us to participate in the discussion for those who are directly impacted and those who are indirectly impacted in our community. And I believe that the amendment, the petition, that what we're asking for, what the amendments are asking for, are reasonable options for mitigation to keep our neighborhood, our homes, our town, safe, livable. And while the Dover amendment allows, does allow childcare in residential areas, and we cannot, we're not allowed to stop that. It protects those developments. It does allow the town to set lawful and reasonable regulations. And so we feel that these amendments would allow the town to lawfully and reasonably set some regulations for childcare centers in our community. And other towns have done this in the past. I would urge the board to support these amendments and come into dialogue with us about them this evening and moving forward. And on a last note, I'm unsure if Easton has a policy or procedure for when applicants come forward to utilize the Dover amendment for their development. And I'm not sure if we have something like that, sort of a protocol. And if not, I would encourage the town to maybe discuss that and consider that as when someone comes through, there's kind of like a series of steps designed where other people can be involved as well to include their input. So again, I'm in support of the amendments. Again, I kept it very general into the amendments. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Hi, Jessica Zimmerman, 89, Kennedy Circle. Oh, I'm sorry, I live at 82 Kennedy Circle. 89 Kennedy Circle is where the daycare is. So basically, this amendment to the bylaw... So basically, this amendment to the bylaws is being proposed. So that way, future residents in other residential neighborhoods here in the town of Easton aren't affected in quite the same way that we are. So we realize here on 80 Kennedy Circle that we cannot change what has happened here with the childcare center. And we realize that they are grandfathered into all of the approvals that they have gotten. However, I think that as neighbors in our neighborhood, we are in a very quiet residential neighborhood where the street literally goes nowhere. So unless you're making a delivery in the neighborhood or you are visiting someone at their house, you are not driving in this neighborhood. So we do not have sidewalks, there is no yellow lines. Coming into our neighborhood, there's actually no stop sign where Porter Street meets Kennedy Circle, and that is the current school bus stop. So I live at 82 Kennedy Circle, which is across the street from the new childcare facility. And our bus stop is almost, it's like point three of a mile to the bus stop, so it's not really walkable. So I I give my kids a ride to school because instead of driving to the bus stop and waiting for the bus, we just drive to school. So that being said, the current bus situation with no stop sign and now once the childcare center, there's a couple of things that we are taken back as neighbors for. One, that we weren't notified. So the a butter notification from the town under these exempt rules is something that we would love to see going forward for future Dover amendment applicants because we were truly blindsided when the parking lot was paved. And then two, if we were involved in the safety precautions as neighbors, we have a general understanding living here, I've been here for 25 years, knowing how the street works. Basically, the bylaws being brought forth for amendment is so we, you know, it's not going to help us, but we're looking to help other Easton neighborhoods with similar dynamics, not have the same thing. And I think the biggest thing is this is a residential home that the town of Easton, this woman is moving out of her home and making it a childcare center. So it's no longer a residence, it's actually being used as a childcare center, which is commercial use, and the homeowner is no longer living there. So there were a lot of things that happened with this particular situation that we would like to not see happen blindsidingly to other neighbors in Easton.
Thank you very much. Please.
Good evening, Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I was unaware of this petition until I accessed the agenda today, so I just read it for the first time today. And I was aware from Facebook that there had been some issues pertaining to that childcare center, but the petition struck a nerve with me. The last time I was in front of the board was in connection with a architectural review for the project on South Street. And notwithstanding the fact that prior iterations of the board had a practice of taking public input, even if not legally required to do so, three of the neighbors who sat in this room were denied the opportunity to speak and the board was not provided with a copy of a letter speaking to that issue that was provided by 10 o'clock that morning. I don't think it's a good look for the board, frankly. These projects that come before the board have a huge impact on the surrounding areas. We're now into our third year just about on a project across the street from us. These things have a huge impact on the neighborhoods. And I don't think it's a good look for the board or for the town generally to go through these projects and then face this kind of issue where something comes up after the fact where people didn't have an opportunity to have any public input on it. So I'm hugely supportive of anything that will expand the obligation to provide notice and also provide the obligation to take public input. And I would just suggest of somebody who's, you know, appeared in front of this board for a long, long time, that it's in this board's interest to take public comment even if not legally required to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So hi, I'm Jackie Ben V. I live at 93 Kennedy Circle, which directly abuts 89 Kennedy Circle. So what I'm about to say is going to echo a lot of what my neighbors have said. So I know that the Dover amendment is restrictive on what cities and towns can and can't do. However, it does provide options to protect the integrity of neighborhoods and the residents that live in them. It appears that the town of Easton has not taken advantage of these options. One of the issues that can be regulated is parking, which the board acknowledged in the site plan review for 89 Kennedy Circle, but still approved the site plan without any studies or site visits. The law doesn't require notification to a butters, as we know, but it also does not prohibit it. I don't believe it is reasonable to expect residents to monitor the monthly agenda of the planning and zoning board. Notifying a butters gives residents an opportunity to voice concerns, especially when such a major change is going to occur in their neighborhood. We did not know about the plans to radically overhaul the property at 89 Kennedy Circle until we came home one day and the front yard had been turned into a parking lot. We found out about these plans after they had been approved and it was too late to voice any concerns. So I believe that this amendment, these amendments will protect the integrity of neighborhoods and the residents that live in them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very quick.
Grace Chang, 85 Kennedy Circle. I just want to say I kind of researched and created this amendment based off a lot of laws that I read on other Massachusetts towns. I did go to all 300 towns, click through them, find childcare regulations and try to create one that was reasonable for Easton in particular. And then also, we did have like a previous draft of this amendment that was a lot longer. I've made it nice and concise, but we did indeed have over 130 petition signatures for that one. Unfortunately, I did not turn it in because I wasn't too sure how that process would be. I just wanted to just kind of mention that I do have 130 signatures for a similar, separate, more restrictive kind of amendment, just that there is broader community to support rather than just our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Crystal Prento, 42 Kennedy Circle. I didn't plan anything, so I just wanted to come up here and say that I do support this. I also do want to thank you all because I recognize that you volunteer your time to do to serve the town and I greatly appreciate that. I do again, just want to reiterate especially the importance of hearing public comment about site plan reviews, particularly in the case of the Dover amendment. As, you know, you all are busy people, you should use the resources you have to hear from people that live in those neighborhoods so they can provide you with information that you otherwise might not have. And I think that's a great value in that a butter notice because you simply just can't know what you don't know. So certainly, maybe what we did know about our neighborhood wouldn't have changed anything. I don't really know. But I do think it's important to at least hear what the public has to say about these site plan reviews. Thank you.
Suzanne, anyone else? You may.
So this is Lee Chengdu, 85 Kennedy Circle. So I don't know, because for me, it's the concern about the parking lot, how is it possible the town can ask the daycare center to put barrier or some speed bumper right before like a next to my property line so they won't be able to do this way, they will be forced to this and this way? I know it's this is not amendment, but it's already happened.
I mean, that's really kind of off off topic. I I don't know the answer to your question. What I do know is that that's not what's on right now.
I know.
So I mean, if you could contact the office maybe tomorrow or something.
Yeah, which department, so that's why I'm here to ask.
I don't know if that would be public works or I don't know.
That would be us.
Public work?
I've heard it and we can.
Do you want to discuss it after the?
Yeah, we can.
Amendments?
If if you want, so it sounds like maybe you do contact us.
Okay.
If you could do that the next day or two.
You will be redirected.
Yeah, it's really safety concern for us. We are not asking them move out. I need them to block something. The town only need to do it.
Thank you.
I mean.
Suzanne, anyone else?
No, Grace. Yes, Grace.
Hi, thank you, guys. I'm the current owner of 89 Kennedy Circle, Brittany Butler. I have my little one here, so don't mind me if you hear her. I just wanted to chime in, so I was able to review this. So I just want to quickly run through them. Number one, the off-street parking space provided for every paid and unpaid unpaid employee. I just wanted to touch on that because I don't feel like it it covers like staggered shifts, part-time staff, substitutes, people who walk or bike ride or get dropped off at work. So that wasn't very specific. And then number two, the one space for every three children requirement, that currently exceeds the current elementary school requirements of two per classroom, which in each classroom you can see 25 to 30 children. In a daycare center like mine, you could see two to four siblings per vehicle if you enroll multiple siblings. And then a lot of centers operate with like staggered drop offs and pickups and have overflow parking on their lots for additional parking. Number four, I had a question on for the current setback requirements. I didn't know if they were asking for according to building setback requirements because I think current fencing setback requirements in residential area are closer to the lot lines.
Flying in the face of the Dover amendment and allowing this and had talked to the town council and he expressed similar concerns. Personally, I just have real concerns about putting children behind a solid structure when they're out playing.
Yeah, they they.
And that's their outdoor activity. It it just creates a bad image in my mind as to what you're trying to provide the best for children when you're providing this care.
I've had recent firsthand experience picking up grandchildren at a number of daycare centers around and hands down, they all have chain link.
Always training. Yeah, the chain, yeah. Which is understand, again, you need to protect them.
Yes, I mean, wide open. So you can see them as you're pulling in, you can see who's playing and where.
I guess my comment is just that I understand why it's written like this, but like overlapping with what's required, what the daycare requirements are by the state and all of the other rules and regulations from other organizations, state, federal, etc., in terms of what a daycare, those overlapping and where do we get that Venn diagram of of.
Well, and and that's that's a very important point, but that's not the board's charge.
Yeah, correct, correct.
So which is why, again, you have, I believe, partly why you have the Dover amendment is because the board doesn't act as the agent that permits and licenses the the daycare facility that's done at the state level. And as I understand it, there are very strict standards to ensure the safety of the children while they're in care.
What do you think?
I agree with you.
From one hand, we the usage is permitted with certain conditions of reviews and everything else. On the other hand, you are imposing so many difficult dimensional issues that almost make it kind of impossible to really do the usage. So there is there is a contradiction here, but I understand why this is coming. It's well explained by all the people that express that. But if we allow the usage on residential areas, I guess we need to be a little more tolerant with the dimension. The problem is the the numbers that are here more than anything else.
I agree.
So in my view, there must be a compromise, some plans with these numbers that satisfy maybe both things. If not, why we are allowing usage and then saying you need to have that and that and that because that the. And just the other aspect of this, and I understand the people affected and I will be affected if I I actually have someone that live in Kennedy Circle, that is, my best friend lives there. But daycares are needed. I don't know if you have kids, grandkids, it's a problem. And we we need those. So putting a a blockage, a big blockage and on their existence of the small little daycares is also a problem. It's not your problem, but it's someone else's problem. And and we are a community, we need to look at that, too.
I agree with that. And I I really singled out one, two, and seven in my mind as being the most problematic. And I actually think I think that for the very reasons that you articulated, I don't think those would pass muster in court.
Or five. Yeah, they it will, they will be legally challenged.
Yeah, I don't know about five. I'm not sure that that necessarily is going to prevent a daycare from opening necessarily, making it financially infeasible, but I can understand why that's not good for kids. Well, yeah, I mean, I think I understand the. Well, that's true.
If it's required, that's one of the spots that we don't get in, but if there's requirements, that's that Venn diagram thing of the state has this, and we, yeah, like where is that middle piece? So if they're required by us to do this and the state says they have to do something else, it it makes it impossible.
No, I I understand the intent, but I think that's written as too restrictive.
Well, it sounds like we're all sort of on the same page here. Do we want any, is there any further, I mean, at least on the standards, do we want to take these in two pieces?
I think so.
All right, let's let's I'll accept a motion on the standards if anyone wants to close one.
Motion to not, am I just not recommend, not recommend the standard Development Standards for Childcare Centers in Residential Districts 235-XX as currently presented to the board.
Second, any further discussion, hearing and seeing? None, Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Get him.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. All right, and then on the next one, I know we haven't talked about it quite as much. Do we have any additional thoughts or comments or motions?
Can I, would you mind if I ask Stephanie a quick question?
Oh, please.
What would be the additional cost in terms of like staff time, but also cost? Because in we're, I know the town is thinking about costs now, perhaps more than before.
It's all based on the number of butters. It would certainly be postage and it would be time spent. Suzanne is, I mean, you've told me before how much time gets spent when you have to do a butter notifications. It's, you know, it's it's at least two to three hours work. And how often do we get exempt uses? Not very often, but this was also another that town council felt again that wasn't wasn't necessarily needed or that he was supportive of.
What what triggers the notification to a butters when they happen?
Hearings and site plan review is not a hearing. So if you have a public, so this was a public hearing because it's a zoning amendment and any, if you're an affected a butter, I believe property, you get notified. If a special permit has a hearing, then a butter notification is required because it's a hearing.
And why we didn't notify when this project went up?
This was site plan review. It wasn't a hearing.
Not special.
Can I, can I ask maybe a hypothetical? If you took out the exempt uses and just said a butter notification, and I'm not saying to do it, but a butter notification, public input for site plan review and just took out the exempt uses part. I know that it increases dramatically the amount of work by by magnitudes, but in terms of.
And again, these.
You're suggesting.
No, I'm not. I'm just, I thought it was a hypothetical. I'm just, I thought it was a hypothetical. Definitely not.
If I could answer the question, and kind of on the, on the legal grounds, site plan review is not, it, it's not something that's allowed as part of the zoning, and it is something that's allowed over time, that the state has said, and I, I believe court cases, that the community can do a reasonable review of a use that is allowed by right. Because it's allowed by right, you can't overly restrict it because, and, and make it untenable, and, and unallowable.
Yeah, but, but giving...
So you have specific...
So a question for you, given the impact, and you heard it, there is a very simple solution to do it. Make this a special permit, and all done.
But you can't make, you can't make it in Dover.
No?
Because again, you could deny a special permit. A special permit is deniable.
So...
The, the, the point is, is if it's subject to, if it's by right, whether that's under Dover or something else, we, we're like powerless to say no. That doesn't mean we can't provide input.
So you, you can, you can do site review, but you cannot do a special permit, because that, that violates the Massachusetts laws.
Correct.
It's like with the Stonehill additions and whatnot, we provided input, but as an educational institution, I think...
Cannot do anything, okay.
And, and the more, the more standard you have, the more restrictions you have, the more you're creating a potential for a...
Conflict.
A pseudo denial, because you've made it, yeah, difficult for the applicant to potentially comply.
Yeah. When, when I was doing the Solar Pound, there was a very clear delineation that if you violate, uh, and there was a town that was taking to court because of that, and they lost in court.
Wall fam, wall poll, there were a couple of them.
Would ADUs fall under this exempt use now, the legislation?
No, they're, they're by right.
They're by right.
They're by right.
That would require the notification for...
The use, the use of that, and, and by the way, if you put too many restrictions like this, you violate the law.
I mean, the tricky part about this is I certainly get it, and, I mean, a couple of the comments that we heard tonight is, they're well taken, which is, you know, there are neighbors in these neighborhoods that may have some valuable insights that possibly we might not have. The trouble that I keep coming back to, and where I suspect town council was going with this, is, you know, where do you draw the line? I mean, and that's, that's the thing that's been difficult with the courts for, I mean, probably decades, since whenever site plan review started. And the other thing that I thought of when I was reading through this is, I happened to be going through, again, the permitting audit, and I feel like the guy that put that together for us would be pretty upset with us if we went in the exact opposite direction of everything he's essentially recommending to, you know, stimulate progress and promote economic growth here.
Well, the other thing is, okay, so I, I hear that you need the input from the neighborhood, and the neighbors, and the abutters, and everything, but they, they are, they are no power on the decision, really. They can express as much grievance that they want about what, but if, if the law is the law, and you cannot, you cannot deny this daycare to come up, it's even going to be worse, because it will be a big frustration for the people of, in the neighborhood and the abutters. I, I don't know, I don't have a solution for that. I think it should be some kind of compromise on the dimensions, and that's it, and something logical that, and that's the only thing you can do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree with you. I think if it were a different proposal on the standards, you know, it might be something I could get behind. But I, I don't like the idea of, of either of them as worded. Um, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be able to support this.
I, I don't want my town to be taken to court.
Me either.
To, to switch tacks for just a sec, so if this does not work, is there a way separately, administratively, that we could work to maybe just make the whole process, maybe make agenda, I mean, make agendas easier to find? Something that people know where to go where it's easier to find than clicking through a bunch of things on the website, where people might be able to learn easier. And I don't think that's necessarily, um, the board's purview, or, I don't even know if it's town staff's purview, but I'm just trying to figure out how to...
The agendas are posted on the front page of the website. And they're on, on the calendars, and...
Yeah, I, I don't think there's an easy answer there, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, and you wouldn't know necessarily till after the, after it was, it happened, like, what, what was important to somebody necessarily. But I do understand the idea of having to review an agenda each time to try to figure out if, if something is going to happen within the radius of where you are. I don't know the answer, I just wanted to raise that as a, there, if there's something that could be done not in this proposed amendment, what if there's something else that could be thought of?
Well, I know one of the first things that we always suggest to people is, have you talked to your neighbors?
Well, I haven't...
I mean, and that's, you know, just being a good neighbor and a good citizen, you might want to, if you're going to do something that's going to affect your neighbors, talk to them. I mean, that's not something that I think we can force people...
Absolutely.
People should do it.
So why, why?
Yes.
Why, why, and this is a question for you, Stephanie, why this is not part of the application?
To...
To notify the abutters.
Well, because it's not part of the regulation.
Well, but we could do it part of the application. You have to notify the abutters.
I mean, that's what this petition is calling.
That needs to be regulation. They, we certainly, when we're talking, and ask, have you talked with your neighbors?
And that's what this is...
No, not informal. Either you notify the abutters, or your application cannot be admitted.
And it's not, and again, the reason that towns that don't have that requirement in their site plan review is because it's a by right use that generally you would allow.
You will allow, but in your application, you need to notify the abutters, so, I, I don't see the contradiction, sorry.
But it's because it's...
I mean, that's what they're proposing.
Yeah, it's, you can't do it.
So then you would support this, if that's your position.
No, I, I, on the application, not on the bylaws. It's a regulation.
I see what you're saying, and I do understand...
I'm, I'm going around it.
I, I see what you're saying.
But if you're telling the...
I'm going around it with some idea, it's another idea.
I don't think it can come from us. I think, you know, people have to be mature, and, you know, talk with their neighbors, and be good neighbors. And that's the trouble, is that when you're dealing with these property line disputes, I mean, I can't tell you how many I've dealt with in my career, and they're some of the most painful, it's like going through a divorce. I mean, when you've got neighbors that are fighting over these things, it's, it's emotionally distressful on both sides, and I get that. But I don't think we should be the ones to be resolving that issue. I think that it's the people that are the participants. That's my opinion, I mean, I...
I think my comment was more decrying the loss of local journalism than anything else, as I thought about it more.
Yes, yes, I will, we will all agree with you 100% on that.
I'm going to dial back to that, yeah, because that could really help.
I, I don't think so. It's eight o'clock. I think, I think we got to adjourn the motion here.
I'll, motion again, I'll motion to not approve, um, the proposed amendment to add a new subsection 235-58X to chapter 30, 235, Article X, administration enforcement as written. Wolf.
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Katam.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Weeks.
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. All right. Thank you all. Okay.
Bob, if I could, if whoever talked about some type of barrier at the town hall, put it up, but if you want to contact me, I'm out the rest of the week, I am happy to talk to Ms. Butler, and see if we can have something that would keep people from cutting across.
Yeah, it's really dangerous, and several, I almost had that one.
I'm, I'm hearing you. Yeah, I'm hearing you, so, um, if, send me, send, send me an email, please, if you, I think you all have my email address, send me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, next up, meeting minutes from July 28th.
Good for me.
Yeah, they're good.
Motion to approve in, uh, minutes, seven.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. We'll start on this end. Weeks.
Aye.
Katam.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
And Wolf.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right, well, chair updates. Now, I think I had told you guys last, at the last meeting, you know, I, I don't think I'll be here at our next meeting, which I believe is Stephanie's last official meeting with us. And so, I know, I just, I want to extend a personally heartfelt appreciation for Stephanie and all that she's done for the town over these years. It's been, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, it has been a pleasure to work with you in this past seven or eight years now. You've been a delight, you, you bring enthusiasm, and energy, and thoughtfulness to the role. You have an incredible amount of patience, you are just a bright energy to be around, and we're going to be missing you, very much so. But we wish you well on your, on your journeys, and we wish you a happy retirement.
Journeying bicycle?
Bicycling. Thank you, thank you so much. And it has been an incredible pleasure and rewarding working for the town, and, and working with this board in particular. I've had the opportunity to work with several boards, I, I've really enjoyed all of them. You guys have just been phenomenal, so, thank you very much.
Well, we're going to miss you. That's, that's my big update for the night, and I know I'm going to leave the last item to you now.
Well, I asked, I sent out the permitting audit and asked people to submit their comments to me, so it sounds like people, Bob has read it, I can tell, because he's really picked up on a lot of the recommendations.
I read it, I just forgot to submit my comments, and I'm terribly sorry. But I have read the whole thing, I promise.
So, if you want to send it to me, and then if we want to discuss them at the next meeting, I, I, Bob and I, I mean, we were in a meeting earlier, and I, I think I understand what your comments are, or what you're focused on.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you guys a little bit of a preview. I mean, I was really impressed, and I like the way that they set it out in sort of different stages of, of areas that we could approach in different ways. And so, I mean, I think that there are a couple right off the bat that we should try to look at sooner rather than later. I think stormwater is definitely one that we should be looking at. I think, you know, one of the bigger, I guess, maybe mid to long-term projects that I think would be really valuable for us to think about is, despite what we heard here tonight, maybe moving away from some, some of the special permits. The process that we've had, this is something that I know I've personally been talking about for a number, at least five years, um, on this board. I think that that was a really valuable insight, and I'd love to try to work with you guys to see if there's anything we can do to streamline that process. I think it would make a big difference. And then, a more longer-term goal, from my perspective, and there are certainly others, these are just sort of the three that were in, you know, kind of at the top of my list, is maybe consolidating our board with ZBA. I think that that consolidation might make a lot of sense, long-term, I'm not saying tomorrow, but I think that there are some good reasons potentially for doing that.
I was going to say, those are going to be some long meetings.
Possibly. I'll tell you though, their, their meetings are a heck of a lot shorter than ours usually.
They are, they are.
Really?
And I think that one takes an act of the legislator, legislature.
So that may be a very longer...
Right, but it is, and, and...
So, so we say that board is superfluous, and we're the better board?
No, 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 no.
Come on, you a board is...
No, it's not.
I will humbly step aside.
I'm sorry, that's on record now. Yeah, I apologize.
Might have to make it a paid position.
So I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Stephanie. Very short meetings, so it could, they, they could potentially fold in, but an act of a legislator to move this forward?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I think that's the one that is, is probably the hardest to do.
Did not hear is to make the drawings, plans, electronic.
What's that?
It says something about...
Well, we, it talks about the wetland.
But it doesn't say plans to be approved electronically.
Oh, you're talking about DocuSign?
DocuSign.
DocuSign, yeah, but it doesn't say that.
No, no, and, and again, that's a...
Our signature on the, on the drawings had to be electronic. No, come here and sign.
But I thought we gave Suzanne the approval.
No, no, not Suzanne, the planning director.
Or whoever it was, the, the stamp.
Which will change, right, right, and...
We already voted on that, right?
Yeah, that's done.
We voted on it. But it's a stamp. Just means you don't have to come and sign it.
Right, but that, I mean, that's not, I, when you have 100 pay, which we rarely do, I think it was, it was Sawmill I had to sign all the plan sheets for. That, that was, that was, that was painful.
That was a big one. With a municipal complex, it's going to be another big one.
Unless, unless there is a state regulation, or some regulation, we should get away from paper, period.
Oh, I, I agree on 100%, but...
As someone who just had to pack up the entire building, the building plans of the entire town of Niddick back to 19, like 20 something, that were in our basement, that are not work, and my library and heart broke, because they're not organized in any way, shape, or form down there, and they're just sitting down there. It's, it's, and you have, they're required to be there. It's a lot of space, it's a lot of, a lot of everything.
The whole bunch of stuff.
Yes, all that thing is awful, I think, I'm coming from a corporation, Texas Institute, and we have, my God, we are, until 2002, we digitized everything, thousands and thousands of drawings of parts and product, manufacturing, women and that, all digitized, that's it.
So unlike federal, there are federal contracts where people do that, they'll come in and you can get grants, and like, they're, they're pre-approved on like federal contracts, so you don't have to, yeah, tons of...
Because of that, because they didn't want people dealing with paper, and taking paper, and putting paper, and making copies, and...
It's hard, though, with D and E size.
If you're here, you should be, no paper.
It's hard with D and E size formats, and there's a lot of information on them.
You also get into like ADA stuff, though.
People can't land on the hood of their car when they're talking in the site.
There are a lot of people who can't let...
But you could submit them through...
Really prefers paper, can bring it out in the field market.
There's tons of ways to do it, you got workflow running to get signatures.
I do most of my review electronically.
But people still got a lot of paper crops of large format.
But there are occasions when I have to get the paper in, because you just can't...
For the site, for the site, for sure, for sure.
Well, it becomes, it becomes an accessibility and an equity issue, in terms of, a lot of people don't have the, don't have the stuff in order to access stuff electronics, so they come to the public library.
Right, yeah.
But it, it really does...
Any final thoughts?
As we separate.
Yes, as we've gone into these separate conversations.
Yes, but we can continue, uh, discussion, these three separate discussions.
Our microphones cut all of it.
Maybe before you ask, I set up right after...
How about a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Wolf.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Katam. Stetsons and I. Take it away.
Good, good night.
Thank you.